Okay. Good evening, good evening. Hello? Okay. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So, call to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings NJ SA 10-4-6, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Courier-News and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration Building and district schools and filing notice with the Borough Clerk. I hereby call to order the regular public meeting Tuesday, August 26, 2025, in the Lincoln Middle School Cafeteria, 400 Donnellan Avenue at 7:02 PM. This meeting is broadcast live. For details, check www.donnellanschools.org. Moving on to item number two, roll call. Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Condit?
Present.
Ms. Iback?
Present.
Dr. Gendrono?
Present.
Mrs. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Sotinoi?
Present.
Ms. Shimpf?
Present.
Mrs. Shep?
Present.
Mr. Walker is not present. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number three, executive session. The Donnellan Board of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, see NJ SA 10-4-12B. The confidential matters discussed by the Board of Education during this executive meeting include items related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements, as well as personnel. Any discussion that does not need to remain confidential will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All individuals who may be discussed in executive session have been adequately notified. Action will take place after the conclusion of the executive session. May I please have a motion to go into executive session?
Please to go to exec.
Seconded.
All those in favor. I opposed. Okay. We'll be back in about 25 minutes or so.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Iback?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrono?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Sotinoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. Okay, moving on to item number six, President's remarks. So, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is having a great summer. The new school year is just around the corner, next week, to be exact, and we are all very excited. Since we last met in July, a lot of great work has been done to get our schools ready for this year's start. So many improvements. Of the improvements, I am particularly excited to see the opening of the new art room at Lincoln Middle School, which we just got a chance to tour briefly. This means we now have art rooms galore, and we're covering our whole K through 12 students. So I would like to give a great big thanks to Mr. Ross, the school administrators, teachers and staff, for getting us prepared, not just the art room, but everything, so that we are ready to go come Tuesday morning. Thank you. Changing gears, yesterday, I shared the honor with Mayor Solento of meeting our new teachers and giving them a great big welcome to the Dunellen School District. I look forward to seeing all of the administrators, teachers, and staff at convocation tomorrow to welcome the group as a whole. As I've done in the past and will continue to do, I bring up the topic of monthly celebrations. August, in August, we have the International Day of the World's Indigenous People, which is on the ninth of August, and this day recognizes and celebrates the rich cultural heritage and contributions of indigenous peoples worldwide. There's also Women's Equity Day on the 26th of August, which is today. On this day, in the United States, we celebrate the 1920 certification of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution that gave women the right to vote. A little premature, but Labor Day on September the first, this is a holiday in the United States and Canada honoring the contributions workers have made to those countries. Now, you're probably wondering, why am I talking about all this? Well, I mention these things, I mention these recognitions to underscore how important diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging are to the lives and the world, to our lives and the world around us. With diversity, we are able to welcome and appreciate different views and perspectives, and how that makes our lives richer and stronger. Equity is important, so we are all playing on the same field by the same rules. Inclusion is key, so there is equal access to opportunities and resources for everyone. And with belonging, you feel you are a part of something, a group or a community where you are accepted, valued, and comfortable. You fit in and are an important part of the whole. These things have an unbelievable impact on our community, especially our kids. Open, honest, and genuine communication that is respectful, positive, supportive, fair, and most of all, kind, goes a long way in strengthening a community. Hope you enjoy the last week of summer before the school year begins on September 2nd. Thanks, everyone, for your time and listening. Moving on to the superintendent's report with Mr. Ross. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Dr. Gendrono. We're going to start the superintendent's report off with a presentation of our access scores from spring 2025, and so I'd like to invite Ms. Drapkin up to provide that presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight, and I will go over the access for English language learners. We did the spring administration in February of 2025. So what is access for English language learners? What it does is it assesses our students' comprehension and communication in English. The English Language Proficiency Assessment is administered to all of our K-12 multilingual learners, even those who have declined services. There's four testing test domains that we focus on: listening, speaking, reading, and writing. They measure, the scores measure proficiency from level one, which is entering, to level six, which is reaching. It's delivered through the WIDA consortium, and New Jersey is 41, one of 41 states that do the WIDA test. The alternate access is English Language Proficiency Assessment that is designed for our multilingual learners with significant cognitive disabilities, ensuring they receive appropriate language instruction aligned with their abilities. So here you'll notice that we have the different scores, one through six. One is entering, so that's when a student knows and uses minimal social language and minimal academic with visual and graphic support. When they're emerging, students start to know and use some social English and general academic language with visual and graphic support. As students continue on, they become developing. This is where they start to use social English and some specific academic language with visual and graphic support. Then we have expanding, so students now know and use social English and some technical academic language. Students that are bridging, they know and use social and academic language, working with grade-level material. And reaching is when students are at the highest proficiency level measured by the test. In order for students to exit, they need to receive a 4.5 or greater on the access test. So here you will notice our results by the students at Dunellen, Faber, and Lincoln Middle School. Here you will notice that 35, about 36% of our students are still in that entering range at the high school. 40% are emerging, about 16% are developing. Now we're starting to hit that expanding, where 6.67% of our students, and we have 2.2% that are bridging. In our middle school, you will notice there are similar trends through the middle school. Down, we have about 17% of students that are expanding and 2.44 that are bridging. And then if you take a look at our middle school, we have students that are in the bridging, and we had a few students that did not receive a score for this round. You want me to? We'll break it down a little more. So our district average overall was a 2.9, which is approaching the developing range. Our listening is our strongest domain. Many students scored a five and six. So what we did was we took the item analysis and we broke this down even further, and we were able to look at all of the domains. We saw that writing was a 2.81, so students are demonstrating consistent difficulty across grade levels. Reading is a 2.78, so it's significantly weaker. Many of our students are falling in that 1 to 2 range, and our speaking is our weakest domain. So what we're recognizing from this is that students can understand more than they can produce in the writing and speaking portion. And if you take a look at their composite scores, listening and reading is a 3.09, which is still below proficiency. Their oral language, which contains listening and speaking, is a 3.06. It's a wide variation in our scores, so we did an item analysis, we saw that. And then our literacy, reading and writing, is a 2.73, and it highlights a major barrier to reclassification. So the data confirms we need stronger oral language and literacy interventions. So what we're doing here in response to the data is we are adding new students with limited or interrupted formal education, which is known as a SLIF course, in our sixth through 12th grade. We are redesigning our English as a new language, which you'll hear maybe some of the students saying an ENL teacher, formerly English as a second language. There are instructional blocks to prioritize student engagement in speaking and writing. We're strengthening our phonics and phonemic awareness for early multilingual language learners, so students that are coming in, that will be a very big focus. We're using iReady Diagnostic to Progress Monitor Growth, and this year they have come out with a Spanish version, which will allow us to look at the literacy from the students' native language, to see where they fall in their native language. We will continue to implement and provide professional development on high-quality instructional materials that we purchased in the 2024-2025. So last year was the first year of using our Vista Learning from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. We're expanding our small group using evidence-based instruction in reading, comprehension, vocabulary, and academic writing. We will continue our partnership. This is our third year that we will be partnering with Up the Bar to provide coaching on implementing sheltered English instruction strategies. And we will also continue to support our staff using John Konsvik through our TESOL trainers. What we do with that is we train each grade level. We try to do about two teachers per grade level each year. They go through the 15-hour SEI training, and that helps with, that provides the teachers, and they get the certificate to be a sheltered English instruction class. So before we wrap it up, I just want to, we are, we're not just identifying the needs, but we are really acting on them. I have been working very closely with our ENL team. We have structured the block, they're very excited, the implementation, the new curriculum, and we just continue to be dedicated to supporting all of our multilingual learners, not just to acquire English, but to achieve success academically across all content areas. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Drapkin?
Yes, I was trying to look for the presentation online just to get reference. When you displayed the scores and the averages that were in there, what was the scale that it was measured on, so we can get like a better understanding of where that like 2.3 and 3.0, I think the next slide?
So what we did, so we get an item analysis from WIDA?
Right.
And they break it down into all of the domains, they item, like analyze everything. So what we did was we took each individual score, and we did the average overall from students that took the test, K through 12, to get an overall throughout the district.
So the maximum score would be like a 4.0, or a 4?
So they can get up to a six, they can go up to a 6.0, but 4.5 is exiting.
Okay.
It's the same, the same scale as the regular test?
Okay.
For each of the subdomains?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then with the wide variations, is there any kind of understanding of what was causal for the wide range? And is it better to take the median on that average versus an average?
So what, the way they have, that's how they break it down in, so they have those composite scores broken out that way. But what we did is speaking, we noticed that our students, that is something that they have to do, and they have to speak into a microphone like this, and it gets recorded. And we recognize that many students, you know, they're overwhelmed, they're a little embarrassed, they're nervous. So with that, we do take the listening and speaking, and we just, we were looking at K through 12 just to see what it's like throughout Dunellen, just, you know, just the different changes. But with that, we can move forward, look at that data, and we are working on how are we going to implement that into the classroom? So we'll start with speaking, we'll get the students to feel more comfortable with it. That just, that tends to be what is bringing student scores down, the speaking part.
Can I, can I add context about this speaking? So this test assesses a student's ability to produce academic English language, not social English language. So the speaking scores tend to be lower nationwide because students are asked to record on topics related to science, social studies, math, and English language arts. So this isn't a test where they have to have an informal conversation with a friend. They might have to talk about the life cycle of a butterfly, or how sea turtles hatch their hatchlings, and it's very complicated language that students are expected to produce, so it is challenging.
Or like chemical covalence bonds and things like that?
Perhaps.
Any other questions from board members? Dr. Gendrono, you need to be on the mic just for the video.
So question, sorry, question I had was, can you go back up one slide with the bar, stacked bars?
Yeah.
So this is our, our kids, is there a benchmark that we compare against, or?
So we compare our scores to our scores.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I would say is that, so access, we also will present on DLM, which is Dynamic Learning Maps, next month when we do the NJSLA. Access score results are partially about programming. There are also a lot about the kids. And so in communities where there's different types of immigrant populations that might have a stronger formal academic background, those students might do better on an assessment like this. And so depending on where you are, what types of communities you're in, and how, how long students have been in the country, that's also a very strong indicator of how students do on these types of assessments. From a curriculum perspective or teaching and learning perspective, understanding that listening is the highest score and speaking is the lowest, right? We obviously then say, what we should do is we should prioritize students speaking every day to the extent that they can become comfortable, and then when it comes time for the assessment, put them in an environment, a testing environment, where they them in a, an environment, a testing environment where they then can reproduce that at, you know, their highest level.
I also just wanted to give a compliment to the district for creating this SLIF classes. So this is an increasing trend we're seeing across the state for students that have limited or interrupted formal instruction from whatever country they might be immigrating from. And it's really great that the district is being responsive to those needs because, to those, the needs of those students that are, that need a lot of support, not just academically, but socially and emotionally. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Did she, is she leave, or she, oh, she's still here? Oh, okay. All right. So first of all, thank you, Ms. Strapkin, and obviously we'll, we'll continue to report out more on progress being made in, in those areas, and I'll share some updates as well. Before I get deep into my report, I do want to just recognize and welcome our newest administrative hire, Ms. Ashley Powell, who is being appointed today officially as the new Assistant Principal at Donellen High School. So congratulations, Ms. Powell. And now you can give your ten-minute prepared speech. So I'm going to, I have quite a number of updates to discuss. I'm going to go a little bit out of order. I'm going to start with the district goals. The district goals for twenty-five, twenty-six are in the education section, so they are attached. If you have access to the computer, you can see them. The district goals, however, do pretty much remain unchanged from last year. So we have four district goals. The first is academic success and the use of data. The second is about improving school climate. The third is operational efficiency, and the fourth is community engagement. So those goals will have associated metrics and outputs that are, that the district will be tracking. We've also identified quite a number of action items that will be tracked on a weekly or monthly basis, and so we'll do some reporting out on the district goals. For the last couple of years, I've done a mid-year district goal update, and so we'll, we'll continue that tradition and, and share updates as well with that. We also have an enrollment update, which is also on the website, and all my papers are out of order. But the enrollment update for, for this point in time is interesting because we do have still forty-some-odd pending enrollments. So the enrollment update is available on the website under the, the board meeting agenda site. Eileen Sanek, who is the Business Office Secretary, does, is also in charge of the enrollment process, and so she's, her head is spinning right now. We actually have forty-five pending enrollments. Seventeen of those are new pre-K students, but currently the district numbers, the total enrollment is thirteen eighteen, and with our private provider preschool students, we're at thirteen eighty-six. So we anticipated being around thirteen eighty or fourteen twenty, like thereabouts. So we're a little under now, but I anticipate that in September, October, we'll see those numbers get back to where we expected them to be. But as of right now, starting the school year, we have fifty-six students in pre-K at Faber. We have eighty kindergarten students, ninety first grade, ninety-two second grade, ninety-two third grade, ninety-three fourth grade, eighty-nine fifth grade, eighty-eight sixth grade, one hundred and seven in seventh, one hundred and seventeen in eighth grade, one oh nine in ninth grade, ninety in tenth grade, one oh five in eleventh grade, and one ten in twelfth grade. So the high school has four hundred and fourteen as its enrollment, and middle school has three hundred and twelve currently, and Faber has five hundred and ninety-two, and then we have sixty-eight students who are enrolled in our private pre-K. So again, where we are right now, we'll see what happens over the year, but we've also added the reregistration process, and we, we often see a dip at the very beginning of the year for registrations. So more updates on that each month as I've done in the past. So it is August twenty-sixth, and the first thing that I will say is the agenda that was posted was updated with two modifications that came in this afternoon. The first is the resignation of Emmy O'Doherty, who is the cheer coach. She has been for, for some number of years. And luckily, we have a staff member, Deana Sweeney, who is very excited to take over that position. Ms. Sweeney is a middle school science teacher, and so she will be taking over as the cheer coach. Those are the only changes from the agenda that was posted last week. In addition to Ms. Powell, I also want to congratulate Kyler Tobin. Mr. Tobin has been in the district for about twenty years. He started as a math teacher and then served as the Assistant Principal at the high school for the last decade or so, and he is now the principal of Lincoln Middle School. He's very excited for the position, staff members are very excited to have him, and I know he's going to bring a great energy to the, to the school. This has been a very busy summer, so I'm going to start with some facilities updates. I want to thank the whole facilities team, Ronnie Haynes, William Castro, and Andres Ramirez, who are our custodial supervisors, Kyle Perelka and Dave Groves. Dave Groves is back from retirement, doing some work in the district. All of our custodial staff, and obviously our tech folks, Dave and Ronnie, who are here with us today. They've done just a tremendous amount of work, and a lot of these spaces have really been transformed, so we're very excited to show them off during back-to-school nights and other events. So at the middle school especially, there's been a lot of work done to try to improve the facilities for students and give them more options in their classes. So we have converted the faculty room, which is this room right over here, into an art room, and so that will be a fully functioning art room. As you know, last year, we hired a new art teacher, Isaac Howard, in about January, and we were able to get a, a fully functioning art room so that students can have access to that and not have to go over to the high school or learn art in a, a regular classroom. We also have a new STEM room that we've created upstairs, and so there will be a dedicated art room and a dedicated STEM room for our dedicated art teacher and our dedicated STEM teacher. Those are very, very exciting spaces. I can't wait to have them fully functioning in September, October, and in the meantime, they'll be very usable spaces for the kids, which is great. We also have a number of offices that were created. There's a new counselor office down this hallway here, right past the bathroom, which used to be a former electronics closet. It is a brand-new space with a brand-new window, brand-new floor, you know, drywall, the whole thing. And there's also a waiting room in that space so that when students come in to speak with a counselor, they can actually just sit there, and, you know, there's a, a proper sort of flow there. The, the faculty room that was located here has been moved to the basement, and that is also a fully furnished, brand-new space with three new windows, a lot of really beautiful lighting, and all new facilities. There is a restroom downstairs, as well as the two copy machines, and all of the things that one needs for a faculty room. We have changes at the main office in the middle school as well. There's been a number of shelves that have been added. We're also going to, if you've been to the middle school, you know that when you walk in the main door, there's a, a glass feature, which is a, it's an opaque glass feature that is going to be removed probably late fall, and a clear glass frame will be put in so that it increases security visibility and allows for, for more access there for the, the secretaries. The facade of the middle school has been problematic, and there was a facade update that was done on the Lincoln Ave side. There's a small parking lot on Lincoln Ave, Lincoln Avenue that is, had some debris that had fallen off of it, and so that facade repair was completed. And then at the high school, we have new offices for our new security guard. We also have a new office for our S R O. So we will again have a school resource officer, who is a Donellen Police Department Sergeant, Sergeant Christopher Lavelle, who will be joining us. And then we also have an office for our, our school wellness counselor, and that's all now on the first floor, sort of in that same main area, main office area. So good visibility for, for visitors and access for students as well. The DHS facade, if you've been by the front of the high school, you've noticed that the front has been completely redone and repainted. There is a lot of cement stripping that has also been repainted, and there's going to be some repainting that's been done there, but a tremendous number of repairs were, were completed. The remaining marble is going to be cleaned, and then we're going to make a determination about whether that should be painted or it should be kept as a, a natural marble. And then the last real significant update was at the Faber Gym. The floor had some significant repairs that were needed, so it was repaired and refinished. And then there are brand-new bleachers that have been installed in the gym, and I will share pictures of a lot of these things in my welcome back letter to parents, but the, the gym looks incredible, the bleachers are beautiful, closed, they have the big Donell and D and the logo, and the, the space looks, looks exquisite. So that's a lot of work to get done over summer. Our team is just working tirelessly to finish everything. As always, we have some delays with things that may, that might have been ordered that had a longer lead time, but, but it's definitely going to be a, a wonderful change for, for the spaces that were updated. We had new staff orientation over the last two days. We had approximately thirty educators in attendance. New staff orientation was organized by Ms. Strapkin, who really did a wonderful job involving all of the administrative team and setting up a good schedule for teachers to get the kind of training they need, and also have some time with their buildings and the, and their classroom setup and just some sort of mental space. Yesterday's first day, we had Mayor Solento join us to welcome all of our new staff to the community and just make the connection between, you know, the borough leadership and the school district, and of course, Dr. Gendrano, so thank you very much for, for, for sharing your words.
It was my pleasure. It was fun.
Yeah, it was fun.
It was great.
Yes. Today we had lunch for, for everyone, and just people feeling really good, so bless you. We have surveyed the staff, and so we'll get a sense of the kinds of things that we need to continue or need to improve upon in the future, but it was a great mix of kind of value-setting, technical information, and then time with their, their, their building. And I do want to especially thank the P T O for providing breakfast on day one. Everyone was very well-fed and, and very happy. So that was new staff orientation. Tomorrow, we welcome back all of the rest of our staff during convocation. This is tomorrow and Thursday. Day one of our convocation is really sort of about expectation setting and goal setting for the year. We'll recognize our newly tenured staff members. We have a keynote speaker, Todd Nesslini, who focuses on staff leadership and staff empowerment, and so he'll, he'll give a speech as well. Then we have school and department meetings, and once again, the P T O coming to the rescue by providing lunch, which is always a wonderful event. So that's day one of, of convocation, and day two is workshops led by our learning experience leaders, which is our, our new initiative that is funded through the Teacher Climate and Culture Grant. So these are staff members who have received a ton of training over the summer, basically to be teacher leaders, and the work that they're doing is great. They're going to be leading workshops on professional learning communities, on Atlas, which is our curriculum platform, and, and A I. So targeted training for our paraprofessionals as well, and then security updates and self-directed time for staff members. So again, a balance of kind of what they need and then also time. Our goal-setting work, we are partnering again with Studer. We have metrics that will be shared out with the community, probably at the next meeting. We have some priorities that we'll be focusing on during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. They are P L C implementation, multi-tiered systems of supports, which is really about giving kids what they need to be successful, both academically and in terms of school climate. Instructional improvements, so looking to systematize good instruction through differentiation and small group learning and, and intervention. Curriculum implementation with a lot of new curriculum options in, in, in play. We want to make sure that we're doing right by the, the proper curriculum implementation. We still need to look at attendance. Our attendance has been improving. We still are chronically absent in some of our schools and some of our areas, and so we want to incentivize students to come to school more, find ways to engage kids to come, talk to families about the importance of attendance and, and all of that. And then feedback, staff member feedback primarily, but also student feedback and parent feedback as well. We've done a lot with staff member feedback over the last year with a process called rounding. We've also done thirty and ninety-day check-ins with new staff members to get a sense of their experience in the district. And we've also had student, student groups and parent conversations about areas that we can, that are, things that are going well, and obviously areas where we can continue to improve. So in addition to that, we are also partnering with an N J A E A, a national group called the Learning Management, I'm sorry, the Labor Management Collaborative. The L M C is a, it's a team of administrators and staff members who basically work collaboratively to solve problems. And it is a formal set of meetings with formal trainings that have been set up. So over the last two weeks, our staff did eight hours of training over two days, in person, really, really collaborative, positive, a lot of sharing, a lot of openness, just a really, you know, valuable set of discussions. So we'll be doing the L M C work throughout the year, and that'll be also a good place for conversations about discipline, or cell phone usage, or master scheduling, or other kinds of things can really come to fruition with really valuable staff member feedback. So that's goal-setting. I want to just pivot now to talk about federal funding. Our approvals for federal grants and federal funds is in the operations section, so you can take a look at the agenda. Our projected versus actual revenue from federal sources did increase. We were pretty close with our projections. The way these are budgeted is typically fifteen to twenty percent below what you have in a normal allocation, and our actual amount was a little bit above what we received last year. So we have a total of six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the federal funds this year. Three hundred and twenty-four thousand of it is in our E S E A grant, which includes all of our title funds. So two hundred and twenty-eight thousand in Title One, thirty-seven thousand in Title Two, forty-four thousand in Title Three, which is really funds that is dedicated towards students and families, multilingual learners. And then Title Four is fourteen thousand. I D E A, which is for students with special needs, and those services, we received three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So we're very, very pleased that even though this funding was about two months late, we actually did receive the full funding that we expected. What happens in the future, we don't know, and we're probably not going to plan to receive any title funds in the future. Unfortunately, we think that maybe we will receive I D E A funds, but we're going to have to do a lot of belt tightening to try to ensure that we're not overly reliant on these funds, and we've used the funds in a really responsible manner. We don't have staff members, salaries that are associated with any of the funds, or anything that's, that is recurring, that we would need the funds in order to continue exactly what we're doing now. So in addition to those funds, we have also done quite a bit with grants, as you know. We have our Expanding Innovations in Teacher Climate and Culture Grant, which is sixty-one thousand dollars. This is the second part of a grant that we received last year for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We're funding the L E L's program through that, and also the Learning Management Collaborative work. And at the end of July, we had the pleasure of presenting at the College of New Jersey as part of the N J D O E Teacher Climate and Culture Institute. So Ms. Strapkin and I were there, as well as Patty Bodak, who's a high school biology teacher, and Kristy Johnson, who is one of our elementary teachers. So great work continuing with that grant. We also have a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Education. It's the A P Course Expansion Grant, and that, that grant is really focused on improving access and performance in our A P courses. We have historically had sort of moderate A P participation and, and A P scores, so we're really trying to improve access to those classes, and then also the instructional priorities for those classes, and the training that teachers are getting as well. So we've had a successful summer A P boot camp, and we're doing teacher trainings and a lot of parent outreach about the importance of the A P classes. We also have four grants that we've now applied for, that we should hear decisions by the middle of September on. These are four grants that are related to comprehensive literacy and instruction throughout the district on literacy. So there is a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which is a, a five-year renewable grant at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year called the Coach Grant. This would support a K twelve literacy coach, who would be working in all of the schools to support our students and our, our staff members. We have the Impact Grant, which is a one hundred thousand dollar grant, which is related to high-quality instructional materials, which we would be focusing at the high school on. The Rise Grant, which is about intervention, and that would be a secondary six-twelve focus. And then the Lift Grant, which is a forty thousand dollar grant dedicated to family engagement, to families of zero to three-year-olds, which is really about getting families and students on board with sort of the, the public schooling aspect of things prior to being accessed to, to universal pre-K. We have our New Jersey Inclusion Project for K twelve systemic change- We have our New Jersey Inclusion Project for K-12 systemic change facilitation. That is ongoing. We, this is an NJDOE opportunity, which is a three-year support from the state on improving inclusive education. We have, two of our three schools were selected for this grant. This is the Faber and the middle school leadership, and Dr. Santinello in special services put this application together. And right now, we're in the process of building a site-based leadership team for the 2526 school year. That's going to be a great opportunity also. We'll have folks from the DOE helping make our classes more inclusive, more successful, instructionally, et cetera. The high school is also participating in the Whole School, Whole Community, Whole Child partnership with School Health NJ. This is the CDC's Framework for Addressing Health in Schools. We have a health and wellness team leader, who is going to be Eva D. Olivera, who's our school-based wellness counselor at the high school. And then we have a team. There's a self-assessment on a variety of topics, and then there's an improvement plan that's put into place. There are ten components of the WSCC model, and they focus on physical health, mental health, social and emotional health, counseling, and community involvement. And that funding is $18,000 over the next three years. Preschool update, we have four classes planned at Faber. We have seven classes planned with our private providers. We have eighty-five students or so at our private providers. We did have one significant sort of stall in our private provider partnership, and that's with Big Hugs. We are using two rooms at Big Hugs in Middlesex, and unfortunately, due to construction delays, the Middlesex site is not available, it's not ready on time. And so they've offered us two spaces in their Piscataway School, so it'll still be free preschool for those families. That's about three miles from town. And because of the delays, they are offering free before-school coverage, free after-school coverage, and free full-day coverage on days when the district is closed. So they recognize their error, and they've provided a lot of support to the district on the backend. We do anticipate the Middlesex site will open January 5th, which would be the first school day of next year. And then we also have the Preschool Facilities Project, which is moving along. There was another meeting about things today. We're pretty much on our timelines as we had expected. The bidding and award is planned from about September 12th to October 10th. So by about mid-September, we should have the bids issued. Then we'll do a pre-bid walkthrough later that week, and then an addendum and any other issues will come after that. Bid opening is planned for the beginning of October. And so if we can do that, then our board meeting on October 14th would be when we would award the bid, and then, you know, it would be up to the contractor to sort of, you know, continue the process from there. So a lot of exciting stuff happening in pre-K. And we also have an update on our annual school-wide plan. This year was the first complete year for Faber as a school-wide Title I school. And what that basically means is that the Title I funds that are sent to the district that are shared can be used throughout the school without any kind of restrictions on which students access that fund, those funds. And so all of our schools are eligible to become school-wide Title I schools because of the high amount of economically disadvantaged students that we have in the community and resident students at each of those schools. So we applied two years ago for Faber, and Faber, last year, spent its first year as a school-wide Title I program. The middle school, we did this year in the planning phase, and it was approved. So next year, all of the Title Funds that go to the middle school will also be able to be used for any student in the school, for intervention enrichment, all the things that we use Title I for. And then this coming year, we will do the same for the high school. And that process is really about stakeholder input, looking at data. We have now a pretty robust set of data that we look at for these things, attendance, discipline, academic performance on state, and also local assessments. And so that's a great thing, because it frees up that money without the kinds of restrictions that being a targeted school has on it. Security updates, we have, we are on this agenda, if you've looked through it, you've noticed that the resignation of Mr. Marenberg, who's our district security coordinator. So Mr. Marenberg did resign. He spent a year in the district. He made really great strides and was a really productive member of our team. I think he's going to enjoy retirement, and we certainly wish him the best. As part of Mr. Marenberg's work, district security team was to recommend personnel moving forward, and so we added a district security guard position, and we are welcoming Mr. Antoine Farret for that position. Mr. Farret will begin tomorrow, the first day of school. So when school opens for kids, we will have our SRO, our School Resource Officer, that gentleman will be located at the high school, middle school, sergeant level, and then Mr. Farret will be located at Faber. And we have posted for the district security coordinator position. We anticipate probably closing the position Friday or Monday, and then we'll go through the interview process, and hopefully by the September board meeting, have someone to recommend for that as well. So we'll be back to where we had anticipated, which was to have three individuals overseeing security. But some updates and some things we've done along the way. We have new staff parking hang tags for all of our employees, which will help us identify cars in the lots that should be there or should not be there. Also helps the PD when we have staff members who have to park on the street, especially around this building, when there's very little space in the lots. We have new signage, blue light signage to alert folks regarding security procedures. So when you come up to a school and there's a security event happening, a blue light will be, a strobe will be going to say, basically, stay away, something is happening in the building. We have new no trespassing signs that will be added around the building. We've done a lot with internal wayfinding and new window signs. So if you drive past any of the schools, you'll see crisp, kind of clean signs in each of the windows, and all of that is basically for first responders. So if a member of the sheriff's office comes in because they're responding to an emergency, they don't know which room 201 is, right? But internal wayfinding signs will help them with that, and obviously, the external window signs as well. Part of that, the updates that goes with that is something called CRG mapping, which is mapping, that's digital mapping done through Critical Response Group, and that is mapping that's available to all of the first responders and local authorities when there are security events that they need to respond to. We've also done quite a bit with camera descriptions. We've also added quite a few cameras in new areas or areas where we needed more coverage. And then we're planning external wayfinding signs to help visitors and, again, first responders just identify where they need to be going, you know, which doors lead to which location, et cetera. So that's the security update. And then lastly, I just want to update, provide some updates about scheduling. Faber, we have new instructional blocks that have been outlined more clearly. This is in math and ELA. We've had also a lot of conversations with, about team meetings and how PLCs are going to be structured. So during the school day, Faber teachers had been working, they have in the contract that they have a team meeting each week, and that, some of those meetings have been data meetings and some have been other types of meetings, and so we're sort of clarifying how all of that time should be used. We also have a new music teacher and a new art teacher at Faber, so we're very excited to hear their perspectives on those programs and how we can enhance what's happening down there. At the high school, we have new course sequences for multilingual learners, as Ms. Drapkin shared. And one of the really interesting things about the process of supporting multilingual learners is there are so many different ways that students come in, some with interrupted education, some with strong formal education in their home language, and some, you know, sort of in the middle. So finding exactly what those course sequences are to be able to support those students has really been essential. So the SLIF classes, the heritage classes, strengthening core resources, that's all been very important as well. At the middle school, we also have the SLIF classes, and we have stronger ESL programming now to ensure a proper sequence. The reason, I imagine, most of you are here is we've also leveled, we've gotten rid of levels next year for certain classes at the middle school. Sixth-grade classes did not have levels other than for language arts and math. In math, throughout the middle school sequence of courses, there are still leveled classes. The honors designation has been removed, but sixth-grade students are differentiated into two tiers essentially. Math is a much more skill-progressive set of learning, and so sixth-grade students will be able to take pre-algebra or Math Six. Previously, those classes had been called Six Honors and Six. So pre-algebra is, you know, what one would term sort of the honors class, we just are not using that designation anymore. In sixth grade, there were no levels in science or social studies. All students were heterogeneously mixed, have been, you know, since, I'm not sure when. There were honors classes for world geography and ancient world history. We're actually in the process of redesigning those courses as well. And so, science in seventh and eighth grade and social studies in seventh and eighth grade, the honors designation has been removed. Those classes are going to be, continue to be heterogeneously mixed now, and so that has, you know, a lot of implications for, you know, class size and the way that the classes will be instructed, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. And language arts as well, in six through eight. So again, math is the one subject for which there will still be differentiated level, provided students, you know, year after year. And, you know, there are a lot of reasons that the changes were made. It is very typical, first and foremost, in smaller schools and especially in middle schools, to not have leveled classes. Certainly, you know, there are many examples in the county, as well as throughout the state and throughout the country, where going from a fifth-grade heterogeneously-mixed class to suddenly we need to split students into different levels in sixth grade, there's not a lot of good research that supports doing that. And so because small schools have such a small set of resources, there are also massive benefits to scheduling and class sizes that can be effectuated as well. The big part of instructional changes and things that we've been looking at, we've spent basically the last year, or last two years, really working on differentiation within the classroom. Small group instruction was a, you know, firmly-stated, targeted piece of what we do last year. And with PLCs and tiered systems of supports, we're really looking at an intervention model as opposed to a tracking model. Intervention is, the response to intervention is one of the highest research-based practices for improving student outcomes across a system. When you think about the types of classes that are heterogeneously-mixed, all sorts of students have all sorts of needs, and we've added an intervention position, and the interventionists will be working with teachers, working with students, but also working with teachers, on identifying very quick ways to assess where students might be with a particular type of learning that they're going to be doing, and then respond to those needs appropriately. So that is the instructional background for this type of change. The research around, you know, the types of intervention, intervention with students with needs, and the teacher perspectives on students' abilities to be successful, these are really massive effect sizes, according to, you know, the thousands of research studies that have been done. And so we're looking at basically trying to set up a system where we are bringing all of our students forward. Within the model that we have right now, if a student is placed into a non-honors class, the chance of them going to a non-honors class the subsequent year are about 99%. And the numbers that I was looking at in, I think it was science, we had something like three students make that change from seventh to eighth grade. So what we're doing is when we put students in a level like that, we are, we're saying, this is where you are, this is the type of student you are, this is your potential. And students often really embody that, right? They feel that. And then they're in this class with students who all feel that way, and then sometimes even the teacher says, you know, I feel this way too, right? And that's not because the teacher doesn't care, but because that's the environment that we've created. And so that's not an environment that we want to create. What we want is we want students to have multiple on-ramps to be able to be successful. That means that, yeah, you might not be the greatest in sixth grade, but in seventh grade, you might be able to ramp that up. And then from seventh grade, you might actually, you know, really hit your stride. And what we know is that when we count kids out early, they felt like we've counted them out, and we've also eliminated a pathway for them to be successful in the future. So by doing this, we are, we're not touching high school classes, certainly, and by doing this, what we're really looking to do is raise the floor for all of our students. If you look historically at the performance at the middle school, whatever metrics, whatever things we've been using at the middle school have not been working. So for us to stick with status quo, for us to not try to be innovative and really try to bring the performance up, is, I think, just the wrong way to approach it. The middle school administration is very supportive of this. Staff members are supportive of the kinds of flexibilities that this creates for students. And will this be perfect when it gets implemented? No. But the model that we're using now isn't perfect either. What we are focused on, however, is supporting teachers who care deeply about their kids to ensure that they get the best outcomes for all of their students, and to provide opportunities for as many kids as possible to be ready for that honors track or honors sequence by the time they get to ninth grade and then as they're approaching AP classes. So in addition to all of that, there is data to support the fact that this is not a particularly welcomed approach within the district, that we have a pretty significant disproportionality among our honors classes. We have zero multilingual learners, zero students with IEPs in these classes. This is all of our honors classes throughout the middle school from last year. We have about 30 to 35% of our economically disadvantaged students are in these classes. The district is about 55%, and we have about 30 to 40% of our Hispanic students. Middle school is about 60%. So not only are we sort of sorting kids out, you know, for this reason, but this is also not an equitable practice. And so, you know, again, more reasons to try something else and really support the staff members to support their students. We have a lot of structures that are in place that staff members are very supportive of in order for this to be a successful move. Obviously, we've talked about PLCs. We're doing a lot of assessment with iReady and Linkit to take good data about what students can do and what they need additional practice in. We have a multi-tiered system of supports, which is going to be looking at tiered students and how, within a classroom, we have students who can access the material the first time. If you think of sort of a normal curve, one standard deviation to the right and to the left is about 68% of students. That's about the number of students who can access, you know, instruction in sort of the first go-around. And then, you know, additional supports that need to be provided through small group instruction within the classroom at Tier Two. And then having interventionists and having Tier Three supports for academic need is very essential as well, and so we have that in place in addition. So the last piece, I would say, is that, you know, the middle school is a Title I school-wide school, and we recognize that parent involvement is important in the conversations that happen around these types of decisions and also all the ways in which a school is functioning. So last year, we ran a Title I school-wide committee. We had, I think, maybe one parent who was interested, but what I would say is I would encourage parents at the middle school who are watching or who are here in person to participate in the school-wide committee. Obviously, the more voices, the better. We love to hear from parents, and we want parents to understand what we do and why we do those things. So, yeah, that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And just to add, and I do have a couple points I'd like to come back to, if that's okay. The first is that I, even though I wasn't on that, I did participate in that committee not so much as a parent, but as a board member and president, and I found participating in those committee meetings being very enlightening, and it really helped to understand, because at first, I had a very similar sentiment, oh my goodness, what's going to happen here? But after participating, hearing, seeing the data, having those discussions with others that were on the call, it made it very clear to me what, why we were doing this and why this made sense. So I would highly encourage parents, folks that would want to join, you know, I don't believe that there's necessarily a ceiling, per se, for the size of what those committee meetings are. And if I recall correctly, it was a total of three over the year? I think it was three, three meetings, which were roughly about an hour apiece over the entire year. So I think the commitment, if anyone is willing to join, is not that much. It's not much of a lift to join, and I think the rewards or the return on that investment of time far outweigh that investment initially. So I would highly encourage that. I did want to come back to a couple of other things, just real quick. First of all, the, let me read my own handwriting, the Faber construction, so with the deadline, sorry, the timelines that you set forth, we could be basically breaking ground in the spring, or the winter, if that's correct?
Yeah, probably more like the spring.
More like the spring.
Yeah. The big process and the contractor organizing who the subs will be and what type of work they need is going to take some time, but then we... But then we, you know, we do have to figure out exactly what will happen with the construction. Right now, and just for those of you, if you haven't sort of been made aware of this, or you haven't been following this conversation, the preschool facilities expansion project is going to, is designed to build eight classrooms at Faber on top of where the existing APR is, and then into that hallway. So, if you walk into Faber, you know, there's some offices to the left, and then if you sort of walk around the APR, that kind of rectangular chunk. So, the reason that we selected that space is it doesn't disrupt classrooms. We can do the construction on the second story without displacing classrooms. So, we can start in the spring. The question is exactly what we can do. And obviously, there will be a disruption, because there will be construction vehicles and materials and other sorts of things that we have to work through. But I think the design process, obviously, we had to redesign the project. And so, trying to figure out that piece of it and the construction management, that's really what's been taking the longest. Once we get rolling, then we have also more control over, well, it would be really good to start during spring break, because you could do this. Or it would be good to start during July, because you could do this, or whatever it might be.
That's great.
Yep.
Finally, glad that we're able to move forward with that, because I think that'll help so much.
Yes.
You'll keep us abreast of the possible disruptions ahead of time, so we can anticipate it and have the public prepared.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I will be sending, once construction starts, I'm sure Mr. Tennant will be sending updates, but I will be sending updates about the construction as well. So...
Another point you mentioned about the universal pre-K, and it is unfortunate that they were not able to start at Big Hugs, but they made, I think they made it right. And we'll be able to have functioning rooms that could be used. I just wanted to put this into perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong. This is our second year really kind of fully doing this. And last year, with the rooms that we had, we were at roughly about 60%, meaning that 60% of the kids in Dunellen that could go to preschool went to preschool, right? And now with this expansion that we've essentially done, not the building part of it, the fact that we've added classrooms, we're closer to around 90%, correct?
We're just at 90%, yeah.
Which means that we're 10% shy of having every single kid who wants to go to pre-K.
Have a space.
Have a space.
Yeah.
For free.
Right. And what I think has been most interesting, and board members have followed this, but just for the members of the public, is universal pre-K is, you know, we have a portion of the seats are at Faber. And that's almost everybody's first choice, is can I go to Faber? But then, we have A+ Academy, which is on Jackson, and then Big Hugs. And we've offered these seats, and there are actually a number of parents who live in town who have declined participating in universal pre-K, because either they prefer their current provider, or the hours don't work out, or the location is better. So, we, so, again, it's the number of seats compared to the universe. The actual number of enrolled students is always going to be a little bit less.
Right.
Yeah.
Fantastic. I did want to just point out that the, you and your team going after all of those grants, that is a huge change from what we've had before, and I commend you and your team for doing that. That is money that we didn't count on and hopefully can get. And that ties into the point I'd like to just make, the fact that we're not reliant on those grants to keep our teachers. Because, I mean, to put this into perspective, and please, I'm not an educator, so correct me if I misunderstand this. But the way that I'm seeing it, I'm seeing school districts that are going bankrupt. I'm seeing school districts that are selling off schools. I'm seeing schools, districts that are having a lot of financial difficulties right now, where teachers are being laid off. And it's pretty awful, and we're not, because we're financially healthy. And I think that is fantastic.
Yeah, I mean, we want to, we want to recognize that the majority of the problem that these districts are facing is not, it's not a mismanagement issue. It is a funding issue.
Yes.
So, we have been expanding, our population has been expanding. The, our free and reduced lunch, or free and reduced meals, economic disadvantage percentage has also been increasing. We've been able to reach more families so that they can fill out the form. And when those forms are filled out, and that's reported to the state, and we have high enrollment, and there aren't other community factors, we've been able to maintain our funding. We don't know what will happen next year.
Right.
And so, even with, you know, even if we receive title funds, we could lose half a million dollars in our general fund. We have been, again, we've been very careful to budget staff members for our regular programs through the general budget. And so, the only way we will lose staff members is if we lose funding, or if we make the determination that a staff, that staff position is not necessary, is no longer necessary. Some of the, some of the other grants that, you know, there are a lot of districts that use Title I funds, for example, to fund interventionists. And so, they're funding salaries. They're also paying a tremendous bump on FICA and, you know, the distributions that have to come out through the federal funds. And those districts are, as that they provide, the basic services. We're not in that position, thankfully.
Yes.
You know, I don't want to count our chickens before they hatch, so to speak, but, you know, I think we've been in a good position, and hopefully we'll be able to maintain that funding.
A couple of other points I wanted to just mention. First of all, I'm glad to see that we are moving, we are wanting to go to the three security officers. And in, you know, in land designation, we were, we were just, we were on the cusp of that. But having two officers compared to one, personnel compared to one last year, I think is fantastic. And the fact that we will eventually have three to support us is, I think, what we've been wanting or looking to do for some time. And I'm glad that we were able to make that happen. I did also want to just note the part about the re-registration part that you mentioned. I think that's also good to highlight, because it's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's at the entry to high school, at ninth grade, entry to middle school, at sixth grade, entry at kindergarten, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The new, the new process is predominantly for rising sixth graders and rising ninth graders.
Right.
That's the thing, that's the process that's been added. And some of you may have rising sixth graders, so you've sort of gone through the process, which is relatively simple. But when changing levels, there's often some data kind of discrepancies. And so, the goal of this process is to just ensure that all the students that are in our schools, belong in our schools, are residents of Dunellen, have proper documentation to show that. We've also changed the way that we're reviewing lease applications and affidavits that are submitted each year, so that if you submit a lease application, it's an annual lease, you have to submit another lease application the following year. You're, there's a flag that we check on and all that sort of thing. Again, it's just to ensure that we are serving the students that we should be serving.
Right. And I know there was a concern in the community about that, and I'm glad that we're taking those steps.
Yeah.
And then, I know, I don't want this to go super duper long. The last thing I wanted to just mention was, did you want to say something about the US News?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I mean, if you've been to the district website, you'll notice that there's now a logo on the district website on the scroll that Dunellen High School was selected one of the, I think it was in the top 40% of high schools in the country. So, it was designated US News Best High School, sort of silver winner or something like that. So, it's exciting news. Mr. Lynch was very pleased about it. And, you know, we'll try to figure out what the metrics were that got us there, but, you know, it's good news.
Absolutely. Mr. Anderson?
It's on the scroll on the main page.
As you can see, when things that show up like that, that are great, we should definitely underscore that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I will, I will stop there. Thank you, Mr. Ross. I appreciate it. So, any questions, guys, before we move on? All right. So, moving on to item eight, public comments on agenda items only. So, the board invites a public comment on agenda items only from members of our community in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The board and administration will be taking notes during public comment, but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, the superintendent may provide a brief response after their entire public comment period is completed. The board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community, but it is not at liberty to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at this time if you would like to make comments on agenda items only. Prior to beginning your comment, please state the agenda item you would like to comment on.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Gendrano, and I live in Dunellen. And I would like to comment on Mr. Ross's discussion of the proposal to remove leveling. I want to begin by acknowledging that I have close relationships with people on the Board of Education, and I know you all to be good people, doing what you think is best for the children.
I'm sorry. I think we're going to have to move this to the open public comment section, because this was not an agenda item.
Even though the superintendent was commenting on this extensively?
I think we need to get through the quick reports and the approvals. It shouldn't, it shouldn't take very long. If you could give us just a few minutes to get through that, because I anticipate this to be a long discussion, and would rather have us have the time to hear everyone out, and if that's okay.
You're the Board of Ed president, so it is okay.
I am the chair. Thank you. Okay. Are there any public comments on agenda items only? Last call? Okay. So, let's move on to item number nine, education discussion items. So, at this time, I'm going to move to the Education Committee report and turn the microphone over to our Education Committee Chair, Mrs. Howard.
Okay, thank you. The Education Committee met on August 18th. Present were myself, Ms. Ibec, Dr. Gendrano, Ms. Drapkin, and Mr. Ross. The Education Committee discussed a number of items, including an update on the district's goal-setting work for the 25, 26 school year, a number of staff development opportunities that occurred this summer, an update on the district's partnership with the Labor Management Collaborative, information about the district's summer academic programs, including a new AP Summer Academy that was run at DHS, details on grant work throughout the district, plus four new grant applications that are on tonight's agenda for approval in the operations section, new curriculum documents that are on tonight's agenda for approval, recent information about the district's preschool expansion and partnership with Big Hugs, student conduct-related regulations and policies that are on tonight's agenda for first reading, and a variety of other items and confidential matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Howard. So, moving on to agenda item number 10, education action items.
Could I actually just, yeah, just want to add a discussion item. I emailed everyone about policy, a regulation 5600 and 5530. These are not going to be recommended as action items for this agenda. But if you could all just read that email, take a look at the, all the track changes are on the Education Committee agenda. This is the code of conduct and the substance abuse policies or regulations. The nature of the changes is really about just referring the regulations back to the code of conduct, rather than having them be a very lengthy documents.
Okay, moving on to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Can we please have the record reflect that I was present at the meeting? I didn't hear my name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your name was on the minutes. I'm sorry. Can we update the minutes?
Yeah, well, update the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Howard. Any other questions? Okay. So, moving on to item number 10, education action items, looking for a motion to approve items A through F as a block, 10A through F as a block.
Motion to make items 10A through F as a block.
Seconded. Open for questions, comments?
I would like to add, I would like to express an extra thanks to Ms. Drapkin and the staff and faculty that work on the grants for our academic programming. I really appreciate the extra initiative for supporting these efforts, so just extra thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ibec. Any other comments, questions?
For letter, for letter F, it says the subjects are integrated maths. Are there associated grade levels for this, or is it at a particular school?
Sorry, this is for the high school. This is the high school M.D. class. And so, we're still using traditional format curriculum for algebra, geometry, algebra II, pre-calc, calc. This allows for a more integrated approach to be used in the self-contained class.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Last call. Questions, comments? Okay. Mr. Pepe, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibec?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Sotinoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number 11, personnel discussion items in the Personnel Committee report. I chair that committee, so I will bring the report. The Personnel Committee met on August 18th. In the, present in the meeting were myself, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Shep, and Mr. Ross. We discussed a number of items, including new hires and recent resignations, many of which are on tonight's agenda for approval, updates regarding the DHS Assistant Principal Search Process, an update on the beginning of negotiations between the Board of Education and the DAA, and a number of confidential items. So, that closes item number 11. Moving on to item 12, Personnel Action Items, looking for a motion to approve 12A through T as a block.
I move to approve items A through T as a block.
Second.
Open for questions or comments?
I'll add, it's just really awesome to see all of the new hires, especially Spanish teacher and the LMS cross-country coach. That's awesome to see. Really glad about that.
And I would echo that, that it is very difficult to get a Spanish teacher, and that's commendable. We've got to be able to do that.
And will the website be updated with the updated roles and personnel?
The, which?
Dunellen, dunellen schools.org.
The admin?
Which roles, I'm sorry?
Some of the, like, the middle school principal.
Oh, yes.
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 Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Last call? Okay. Mr. Pepe, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibec?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Sotinoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful, thank you. Moving on to item number 13, Operations Discussion Items. Mr. Walker is our chair, who is not here this evening, so I will turn the floor over to Mrs. Condit to give the report for Operations Committee.
The Operations Committee met on August 19th. In attendance was Mr. Walker, Mr. Gendrano, Mr. Pepe, Mr. Ross, Mr. Sotinoi, and myself, and discussed a number of items, including information about the ESEA and IDEA grants, which were in line with the district's expectations and the budget presentation in the spring. Four new New Jersey of Education grants applications are also on tonight's agenda for approval, contracts with the two private providers that the district is working with for preschool expansion, a number of updates related to the district's preschool expansion grant, which is reaching the end of the design phase, updates on the many internal construction projects occurring throughout the district, including the creation of a new art room and a new STEM room at LMS, new office spaces at DHS and LMS, the new bleacher installation of Faber and other projects, and a variety of confidential matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Condit. So, moving on to item number 14, Operations Action Items, looking for a motion to approve 14A through Y as a block.
Move to approve items A through A as a block.
A through Y, sir.
Oh, A through Y.
Second.
Open for questions or comments? Last call? Okay. Mr. Pepe, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibec?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Sotinoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion pass. Motion passes.
Awesome, thank you. Moving on to item number 15, Old Business. So, does anybody have any old business that they'd like to bring up from previous meetings? So, the only thing I would bring up is that, just as a reminder, the New Jersey School Board's workshop is coming up in October. I believe it's October 20, 21, 22, and 23 in Atlantic City. It is a wonderful opportunity to meet other school board members as well as administrators and such in an environment that's very much pro-learning, pro-education, pro-kids, and it is, there's great opportunities to learn about what's cutting-edge and new. And I believe you also have a presentation coming, during that workshop. Fantastic. So, just as a reminder, we do need to confirm who's going to be coming, so please let Mr. Pepe know. Okay, any other old business?
Yes. Just a reminder, with the recent storms and the use of the facilities for emergency management, bringing up the point of looking into grants to support some of those operations and coordinations and to reap the benefits of coordination with the emergency services as well as the Police Department, Fire Department, in utilizing government grants to facilitate the use of the facilities.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sotino. Noted. Any other old business? Okay. Moving on to item number 16, New Business. Anything, any new business anyone would like to bring up? Okay, last call? Okay. Moving on to item number 17, President's Remarks. I think I've said most of what I was going to say at the beginning, so, and commented through, so thanks so much. And number, moving on to item number 18, Public Comments on Any Issue or Any Topic. The Board invites public comment on any issue or topic for members of our community in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves in school matters of community interest. The Board and administration will be taking notes during public comment but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, the superintendent may provide a brief response after the entire public comment period is completed. The Board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community but is not at liberty to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at this time if you'd like to make comments on any issue or any topic.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Okay, so, my name is Rebecca Gendrano. I'm a resident of Dunellen. Thank you for giving me a little bit of extra time to edit my comments. I want to begin by acknowledging that I have a close relationship with people on the Board of Education, and I know you all to be good people, doing what you think is best for the children and families of the Dunellen School District. I also know that you work hard, and that work is not always recognized and appreciated. I appreciate you. I also want to note that I've been a strong supporter of the school district since our oldest child enrolled in kindergarten. Many of you know that I currently serve as the co-president of the PTO. I've been a class parent, chaperoned school dances and field trips, organized community events and talent shows, all to foster a positive community atmosphere. I've donated countless hours to the district, along with hundreds of dollars' worth of cupcakes and food and supplies, helping to raise thousands of dollars to support our schools. I am about as involved as a person can be. So, when I received an email from the LMS principal on August 21st stating that LMS honors classes would be phased out based on family feedback, I was shocked. I never provided such feedback, and other parents have told me that they feel similarly blindsided. Perhaps a small group of parents provided input, but the school community as a whole was kept in the dark. What efforts did you make to inform families of these curriculum changes? When was this decision voted on and how was notice given? The evidence available to me suggests that this decision was pushed through quickly without gathering input from faculty, staff, students, or parents, building support among community stakeholders, or thinking through all the aspects of the implementation. For example, when my husband and I met with my son's teachers at the end of his fifth grade year, they let us know that they would be recommending him for the honors classes. When I spoke with the principal and assistant principal of Faber Elementary School on August 25th, yesterday, they had no idea these changes were being implemented. At the sixth-grade orientation in June, I received a student handbook that discussed the honors curriculum and requirements. That book was, handbook was still on the LMS website as of yesterday afternoon. Why are teachers and administrators talking about a middle school honors program only to pull the rug out from under our feet? When I reached out to the administration for answers to my questions, I received swift assurances but none of the data that I need to assess what is best for my child. Mr. Ross finally addressed some of those points tonight, and I'm grateful for that. A presentation like this should have been made months ago, not two weeks before the first day of school. The Strengthening Gifted and Talented in Education Act states that a Board of Education shall ensure that appropriate instructional adaptations are designed for students who are gifted and talented. Faber students had a separate GNT program. At LMS and DHS, they took honors courses. Without those honors courses, how will the district meet its legal obligation to provide gifted middle schoolers with a challenging education? The Act also requires each school district to submit a report to the state detailing its gifted and talented services, policies, and procedures. How has that plan been updated to reflect the removal of the honors courses? Are our parents able to review this plan? Does our district have an equitable system for identifying which students qualify for advanced coursework? If not, then it's incumbent on us to fix that problem instead of eliminating honors coursework altogether. I believe strongly that we need an equitable system with many on-ramps to the more challenging courses. I'm sure that many parents agree with me that we need all of our students to be achieving academic excellence. How does eliminating honors actually get us there? If honors courses are eliminated, how exactly will differentiation be practiced? You're asking teachers to turn on a dime and change how they've done things. Such innovation is fine, but how are you supporting the teachers through this change? What in-service trainings on the topic of differentiation will deal with the needs of high-performing students? I respectfully request that the Board of Education and Superintendent pause the implementation of this major LMS curriculum shift for one more academic year. Taking the time to educate families on current challenges and build broader consensus on possible solutions will benefit everyone. I also ask that the Board of Education begin sending monthly district-wide emails outlining upcoming meeting agendas and explaining major votes. Communicating with parents in a timely manner is an important part of your job. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Jacqueline Wiggins and I live in Dunellen. I have two daughters, ages 12 and 11, who attend and will be attending Lincoln Middle. We come before you regarding the Board's decision to phase out the honors program at Lincoln. The honors program provides gifted and talented students with the opportunity to be challenged and thrive in an uninterrupted and undisturbed environment. This program greatly benefited our 12-year-old last year. She excelled in each of her honors classes, making high honor roll for the first three marking periods and finishing with honor roll in the fourth. She was also inducted into the National Junior Honors Society. We wholeheartedly believe that this could not have been accomplished without her being in the honors program. To no longer have this program be available to her is heartbreaking. She is left feeling discouraged and hesitant as to how she will be able to continue to thrive in her non-honors classes. The same sentiment is felt with our incoming sixth grader, who was also looking forward to entering the honors program. For this program to be taken away from these students only to be placed in a non-honors classroom that are already disruptive and overcrowded is unfair and a slap in the face to the students who have shown throughout their educational journey that they have rightfully earned their spot in the program. Additionally, we are not happy with the manner in which it was casually announced via the new principal's welcome letter less than two weeks before the start of the school year. There was no advance notice to the parents and students that will be affected by this decision. Not once was it even mentioned during the sixth-grade orientation in June, nor in any of the written materials and Program of Studies handbook that we were distributed at the orientation. Needless to say, this has left a very bad taste in the mouth of the parents and students who were left confused and outraged by the revelation and decision. To not have been given advanced communication and a clear understanding as to the dismantling and elimination of the only gifted and talented program offered at Lincoln without the opportunity to oppose it is unfair. I am here tonight, along with other parents, to ask the Board to reconsider this decision and reinstate the honors program effective immediately. There is a way in which the Board's educational agenda can be accomplished without the removal of the honors program, especially since these students have already been screened and assessed over their educational journey. To have them reassessed and, in essence, start over is a waste of time and resources, which would be better served with the students who actually need it. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jelene Alonso and I live in Dunellen. I wasn't going to speak, but then I heard the words "open and honest communication." And it doesn't really get much to get me talking, anyway. I heard "open and honest communication," and I felt compelled. I've been an educator for 20 years. I've been a parent of this district for six years. My husband's family has been a part of this district for over 40 years. Full disclosure, prior to Mr. Tobin's letter, I unenrolled my high-achieving sixth grader. I did not feel she was being challenged in her educational journey. It was a choice that was so hard, it took us all the way to August to make. But ultimately, we did not feel Lincoln would offer her enough challenge and opportunities for growth. I have another high-achieving student making his way through Faber. And we hold out hope that we can keep him in his neighborhood schools to see him graduate in Washington Park, two blocks from our house. Whatever the reasoning was for this change, which now we know because Mr. Ross has presented it, the communication was not open and honest. Families should know the reasoning behind the changes prior to two weeks. We should know how these changes are being implemented, again, what support is being given to the teachers. All of this should be shared with us. You are within your duties to make changes to our schools and do what you believe is right for our children. This is why we have elected you. Mr. Ross, your explanation is completely logical. Striving for equitable practices and representation and fair representation in our classrooms, this all makes sense. But where was this information in June? The lack of transparency and communication did not put Mr. Tobin in good light, and it did not put this team in good light. A few sentences at the end of a welcome letter did not feel very open and honest, Mr. President. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Mazur and I am a resident of Dunellen. As you've previously heard, I am, I share feelings with these other parents in the sense that the communication was completely lacking, was not there, and Mr. Ross's, I'm sorry, Mr. Ross's explanation and insight that he provided was much appreciated, but the one thing that I did note that was lacking was what kind of support are those high-achieving students going to get, other than a spectrum of the math classes? What kind of support, both emotionally, for ensuring that they do not feel demoted from an honors class that they've already been told that they were placed into, to now they're just, I don't want to say not worthy of it, but this, the middle school students are not worthy of an honors class, is how my son interpreted it. And he was devastated to hear last week that he is no longer going to be in honors classes. So, I just reiterate, what kind of support do these students get? What kind of support and prevention? I hear the word intervention, but that doesn't address the support that a high-achieving student would need in a mixed class or a heterogeneous class structure that we've heard about. So, that's what I would like to hear in the next type of communication that goes out when these types of changes are being made. What kind of support are those high-achieving students getting, other than just being forgotten about, left in the classroom, and then, because they don't need a one-on-one assistance or additional assistance or intervention, forgotten about in the back of the classroom and just left to their own devices because, well, they don't need the help, they can get the work done on their own. That's my fear, and that's my child's fear. Thank you.
Hi, Nicole Moore, Dunellen, New Jersey. I'm just going to speak on the communication because I know a lot of parents here don't attend every board meeting, but I do. So, like many of the parents that are here tonight and recently learned of the changes at LMS with regard to the honors program, when I saw that post and started hearing the people talking about the change, I was genuinely shocked to hear that this was happening. And then to hear that there are parents that have expressed their concerns to current Board of Ed members, and those Board of Education members have responded with "you should be more involved and attend Board of Ed meetings," again, a bit of a shock. As all of you here know, I attend pretty much every Board of Education meeting. In the last school year, I only missed one meeting due to illness, but I still watched it at home. And I've been incredibly active, involved parent in the school community since my oldest started kindergarten, and they are just about to enter their senior year. As PTO president, I made it a point to attend, or at least livestream, every Board of Education meeting and to pay attention to what is going on in our schools. I wanted to make sure that I was always informed, not just as PTO president, but as a parent. So, for me, an incredibly active parent in the school, to be surprised at such a drastic change in the curriculum on these, in these schools, it was shocking, and it was that lack of communication on this change. I do not recall any discussions at any public meeting of the Board of Education during the last year with regard to removal of the honors program at LMS. I went so far as to review every agenda and meeting minutes on the website. The only time the honors program at LMS was mentioned in the agenda was in the January 7th reorganization meeting, when the then-current school education programs were approved to continue for the school year. There was no other mention of the LMS honors program from what I could see in the agendas or the minutes, or from what I recall being discussed in the meetings that I have attended. So, that's why everyone is so shocked to hear this when it's not ever being discussed here as well. Thank you.
This is Jacqueline Wiggins again. I know that the turnout seems small, but on paper and at least in the petition form, we do have other parents that share the same sentiment. Tonight, I have about 36 numbers, but I saw online that there's more numbers filling in for that petition, so I don't know if you guys want the petition now or wait until it's fully signed, but I just wanted to make note of that as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Last call? Okay, closing up the section. All right, so, we're going to move to item number 19, Executive Session. The Dunellen Board of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, CNJS-A10-4-12B. The confidential matters discussed by the Board during this education, sorry, executive session include items related to individual privacy, personnel. Any discussion that does not need to remain confidential will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All individuals who may be discussed in executive session have been adequately notified. Action will not take place after the conclusion of the executive session. So, may I have a motion to move to executive session, please?
Motion to move to executive.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so, we will adjourn from the executive session. We're closing it out here. Our next meeting is September, sorry? September 23rd, right here, 7:00 PM. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much.